Good morning and welcome to the Committee of the Whole meeting for Thursday, March 14, 2024. I'd like to call this meeting to order and acknowledge that the Sunshine Coast Regional District is on the territories of the Seashell and Squamish Nations. We have an agenda before us. Are there any changes, alterations, omissions, additions? Seeing none, can I have a motion to accept the agenda? Move seconded, all in favor. Excellent, we have an agenda. And could I also have a motion to receive all reports and communications? Move seconded, all in favor. Thank you. I think we are ready to roll. So I am going to pass this over to GM Ian Hall to give us an introduction to the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair. By way of introducing the delegation from Sandy Miller with Strategic Alliance for Emergency Resilience, I just wanted to offer some context to the committee for why this is on the agenda and what happens next. So this is on the agenda as part of bringing forward enhanced communications on emergency preparedness work that's being undertaken by the Sunshine Coast Emergency Program. Staff have been overseeing grant-funded work by SAFER, that's the company that Sandy Miller works with, to improve planning for heat emergencies on the Sunshine Coast. This follows board direction and is aligned with the 2024 Emergency Program Service Plan. And the plan that SAFER will speak to you is currently being finalized. It is noted in the document that it is a living document. And you'll hear from SAFER about why having a heat response plan is so important and how they've undertaken this work. And for assurance, staff wanted to highlight that there are next steps on this project that will be taken in the coming weeks before the hot season is upon us. And I would particularly call out that there's ground truthing, fact checking, and integrating other emergency program data, and for example, the list of cool places and possible cooling centers. And this is part of integrating the plan and preparing it for use. And secondly, creating public-facing information for our website and dissemination to stakeholders as part of promoting personal neighborhood and organizational preparedness. And beyond these next steps, the plan will continue to evolve through use. So to summarize, the Emergency Program is preparing for heat response. This living document is a significant step forward on planning for a relatively new type of emergency in our area. And staff will be working to confirm, operationalize, integrate, and communicate the plan based on the consultant's report that you'll hear about today. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that introduction. I just have a quick question. Were heat plans mandated by the province under the new Emergency Act, or are we getting out ahead of the actual legislation on this?
Thank you for the question, Chair. Staff don't believe that there's a specific requirement for this type of plan, but as SCRD works through our list of vulnerabilities, and we are working on a separate project to update that right now, we know that heat is one of them, and it is an increasing vulnerability. And so in accordance with legislation and the operations of the program, we look to build plans that are detailed enough to respond to specific types of emergencies and build on our all hazards, emergency response and recovery plan. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I'm going to call on Sandy Miller to give the presentation.
Morning. Thank you so much. Can I confirm that you can see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. I like it when a plan comes together. So thank you for allowing me to speak with you this morning. I have really been fortunate working with the Sunshine Coast Emergency Program in the development of this heat plan. One second. Now I see if I can get my slides to advance. There we go. Just for a little bit of background for you, in June of 2021, there was an extreme heat event with a large number of heat-related deaths reported across the province, and a significant number reported within the Vancouver Coastal Health Authority, which is the health authority that covers the Sunshine Coast area. In June of 2023, supported by a UBCM grant, the Sunshine Coast issued an RFP for the development of an extreme heat plan to protect the health and safety of the sensitive populations such as the elderly, children, and unhoused persons who reside within and along the Sunshine Coast. The plan development included engagement sessions with staff, with partner agencies, with response and support agencies, and with community-based organizations and in some community-based businesses as well. We did a full literature review and also built-in best practices that have been developed by other jurisdictions that also have been moving this type of initiative forward. We looked at the risk assessments and the growing probability of heat-related emergencies as the overall climate has been warming. And then we did a compilation of demographic data. The community engagement, we engaged with 34 separate organizations by phone and then a further 78 with email engagements, asking questions. We got a lot of very valuable response back and a lot of support for the Sunshine Coast Emergency Program, moving this type of initiative forward, and certainly a lot of interest in being a hub to share information forward should there be during the next heat emergency through different communities outreach with their groups. The plan is actually broken into three elements. As Ian Hall mentioned, these are intended as living documents. Any emergency plan to be viable needs to be not just written, but actually used. And then, once it's been used, reviewed to see what worked really well, what didn't work so well, what changes or tweaks might need to be made, and then improvements made in the plans and things. So we did it as three separate elements. There is the Extreme Heat Plan, which meets all of the legislative requirements for an emergency plan. It has a lot of background, a lot of statistics. We did an Extreme Heat Playbook for community partners, which is information to be shared with other community groups that want to help support messaging through a heat emergency. And then we also developed a Quick Start Guide for the Emergency Operations Center through all phases of an emergency. So the heat plan, the overarching goals were, of course, to alert public and community partners to the risks, increase public awareness regarding extreme heat preparedness and heat health safety, and then to validate extreme heat response measures and identify opportunities to improve. The Extreme Heat Playbook is a practical handbook that can be easily distributed to community partners that want to support the SCRD in getting messages out to vulnerable populations that may be served by various organizations across the Sunshine Coast before, during, and after an extreme heat event. The Operations Quick Start Guide is exactly what it sounds like. It is designed to provide emergency response staff with a checklist for things to consider during each phase as we roll through heat emergencies. There's the preseason planning sessions that may or may happen in large and small groups. There's the preheat warning as Environment Canada starts to issue warnings. They're the temperature gurus. And then what to do through Level One, through the heat warning, through an extreme heat emergency, and then the deactivation phase and information on conducting a postseason review. It includes roles and responsibilities, along with templates for internal and external communications, all of which can be customized as needed by the emergency response staff with the Sunshine Coast. And that's my presentation this morning. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. I'm going to lead off with a question of my own, which is that I wasn't very clear, reading this plan, where the division of responsibilities falls. Once there is an EOC activation, of course, our role is very clear and well-defined. But some of the material in here, like, we don't have data on vulnerable populations. And the idea of going around and having a major communication plan about heat preparedness, would this not be the role of Vancouver Coastal Health?
Vancouver Coastal Health does provide some of that type of messaging. But as with any type of emergency, the more information that can be shared generally with the public as to how to prepare themselves is generally considered a best practice and a way forward for your emergency program to not always be starting behind, essentially. It is just a good way to get that information out to the public.
So just to follow up. So we are responsible, legally responsible, for leading this, or aren't we?
I think that's not necessarily clear in the legislation right now. It very much would depend on how the information rolls out. Yeah, Nancy, go ahead. Thanks.
Sorry, just to clarify, if there is a health emergency, BC Health is the lead agency. Vancouver Coastal Health would be our lead here on the Sunshine Coast. And as you have said, when we stand up an EOC, we are here to support and help organize and get the message out. But just to echo what Sandy is saying, from the Emergency Program perspective, if we can educate the public, give them information that's credible, it builds resilience in the community, and it just makes it that much easier to manage a heat emergency if everybody, you know, has good, clear information that they can resort to. Thank you.
Thank you. Directors. Director Bax.
Thank you. Thank you for this report. This is awesome. I see that on, let me see if I can find it now, I believe it's page six of our agenda, there's a good group of people that were engaged to create this plan. Now, rolling this out, is there a public awareness campaign? Is this plan going to be brought to the attention of this group of organizations? And I just want you to know that I personally reached out to my community association and my fire department to let them know that this was on the agenda. And I'm very interested in seeing, and I understand staff is going to be including this in our website, which is awesome. This is such a great resource. But I'm interested in knowing how far the campaign is going to go to reach this out to the public.
Thank you.
Can I answer that?
Miss Hughes, yes, please take that.
We have different initiatives to socialize it. Yes, it will be on our website. We have Emergency Management Week coming up in the month of May, where we will be doing a campaign with all of our emergency response. So this plan is part of it. And then also with our community presentations, we'll also be socializing it to the public. Internally, we have what we call the SKEP Committee. That's the Sunshine Coast Emergency Program Committee, which meets quarterly. We were trying to do it every six months, but we've gone back to quarterly, and it's with our external partners. So that's where we will socialize this plan and the stakeholder document that was mentioned. And that is everybody. It's local on the coast, so it goes from BC ferries to fire departments to Vancouver Coastal Health, CAP highways. So it's a Folsom group of people that we'll also be socializing it with. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Lee.
Thank you, Chair. It immediately comes to my mind that this is very similar to our FireSmart and the ongoing stuff we do to talk about how to keep yourself safe from wildfires and what happens if there is one. Very expensive, all that stuff. And we've been fortunate, I believe, in getting some grants for the FireSmart and all of that aspect. Will we be getting grants for this, or are we expecting the taxpayers to foot the bill for all of this pre-emergency stuff that we're doing?
GM Hall.
Thank you for the question through the chair. So the work that was done to prepare this plan was 100% grant-funded, and many costs, if there was a heat emergency and an Emergency Operations Center was activated and extraordinary costs were undertaken, some or all of them would be recoverable from the province. We continue to look for and apply for grants to support our emergency program because, as the director noted, the need is only increasing. And I know that there is conversation at the UBCM level about ongoing funding to support core emergency program needs because applying for 15 grants a year is onerous. Thanks.
Thank you. Alternate Director Wynn.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Sandy. That's a great report, especially like all the checklist, the messaging, the posters, communications, all the best practices and templates that are provided. So very comprehensive plan. In regards to collaboration, I noticed that there's a few references to collaborating with the Seashell Nation, and that's good. But what I haven't seen in the plan is any collaboration with the Squamish Nation. Was that done and will that be done?
Who would like to take that? GM Hall.
Thank you. So invitations to participate in this and some of our other emergency program projects have been extended to the Squamish Nation. We continue to keep them informed, even if they choose not to participate or don't have the capacity to participate. And as an added note, the province recently provided some funding to local governments and First Nations related to emergency management, pre-work and planning, and new requirements that extend to us through the Emergency and Disaster Management Act. And we are currently very actively pursuing conversations with First Nations about how best to move that forward, knowing the importance of that piece of our emergency planning work. Thanks.
Thank you. Director Gabius.
Thank you, Chair. And through you, the kind of follow-up to Alternate Director Wynn's question, like how, so I see that the Tano Gibson's District of Seashell and the Seashell, the SNGD, has been involved in this. Like, what is the level of collaboration? Like, how are we all working together on this as a region?
GM Hall.
Thank you for the question. Taken at the general level, our member municipalities participate in the service, so to speak, and we thank them for that. At the staff level, there's excellent coordination. In the event of an emergency, of course, there is coordination through an Emergency Operations Center. And if it's regional, that means we would be engaging with all of those municipalities. They would likely be invited to have staff working in the Emergency Operations Center for the deepest level of cooperation and collaboration. Thanks.
Just going to follow up. I'm trying to tell you where I'm going with this. It's such a complex, like, emergency preparedness is such a complex topic. There's so many players involved, VCH, BC wildfire, like, there's so many. And we're hosting the information about emergency preparedness on the SCRD website, as far as I can tell. Would there be merit to kind of making it a regional, so having an entity, or like, that is actually all local governments together with all the other players? Or so it's kind of, it's not, it doesn't look like it's an SCRD. I mean, it's led by the SCRD, but it's actually a broader endeavor. Does that make sense? I was just looking, I just did a quick search, and Cowichin has, I think it's Cowichin Emergency Management, and they have a website dedicated to all emergency preparedness stuff. So I'm wondering if there would be merit to doing that for the region here?
Staff.
Staff hear the question, and it's something we can take into consideration as we plan for the next evolution of communications on emergency management for the region. Thanks.
Don't make more work for you.
Director Inkster.
Thank you, Chair. We're seeing increasingly a number of plans and/or reactions to deal with what would be what we all know as climate change. And we're having to bring in these plans and look to our own funders other than other funding bodies, which they're being pulled in all directions. And they eventually introduce funding for us, sometimes through programs, usually closer to election time. Hint, hint, there's election coming. And so we can maybe pull on those purse strings to inject money into our local economy to deal with, through government, to deal with climate change. And this obviously is one of these programs that we hope can come, money can come from somewhere else if we have to keep going in these directions. My question is, through you, through you, Chair, to the staff presenting this, is that we tend to be reactive. And it's not staff's fault because the board reacts and asks staff to put plans together. But we're not, we, looking forward, I think we just have to get more and more proactive. I talked about water in 2010, and three-quarters of the people ignored me, and I think 20, the other 25% thought I was heretic or a heretic. So here we are with that issue. So in this, on this issue with the proactivity piece, I would say, and it's mentioned in here in the notes, I would say, how easy is it to start talking to the public about, and it's a small piece in here, but it's really important to me because I've done it around my house, is how important is it to start talking because I've done it around my house, is how important is it to start talking about planting sadly drought-resistant, deciduous vegetation to cut down on direct sunlight? How difficult is it to present and/or convince the public to maybe do tinted windows in some cases, as well as deciduous trees that don't need as much water in order to cut down on the heat? That's the proactive way to deal with climate change and the heat bubbles that we're hitting. So I wonder, I wonder about that, how difficult it is to start going in that, those proactive directions, Chair, and to start talking about those things as part of the plan.
Over to you, GM Hall.
I thank the Director, thank you, Chair. It's a very, that is the big question, it's a very general question. But the adage that an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure is something that the emergency management team really takes to heart. And so we do try to emphasize preparedness. We're seeing, I would say, the ship is starting to turn in terms of attitudes out there, particularly around heat. And that extends even into regulation, like, the new building code that just came into force has cooling requirements in it. But it's work that the emergency program takes seriously, and it will be, as our emergency management coordinator said, it's something we'll be talking about during Emergency Management Week. Thanks.
Follow-up.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I was a little bit distracted by the pointing that was going on. I think the screen was out, but I had another point, but I was confused by the pointing. So what I wanted to say was, one of our vulnerable populations, the big vulnerable populations is the aged, when the heat goes up, that's a big concern. And what most likely we see is Seashell Hospital and the new facility in Seashell having air conditioning. So that's helpful. But we all know that it's, once again, another energy issue, because now we have to expend energy in the winter to heat in Canada and in the summer to cool us. So it's a big energy issue. So I think our, those facilities that look after, people that are in those facilities are probably in good shape because they have AC, but because they're new. So we're meeting that challenge, I think, but it's not all, it's not for the residents that are older, I think there's a challenge. So once again, back to proactivity and, but somebody who's older, who's 85, is not necessarily going to plant a bunch of deciduous trees because Darren said so. So we just need to start talking about where to go, how to be proactive. Thank you.
Thank you. In that vein, my question is, I understand that staff has a list of air-conditioned facilities. It was not included in this report, but it exists. There's not a lot, because I went around looking for them at one point. But are we being proactive about upgrading our own facilities, such as our community halls, so that they are prepared for heat? For instance, we are about to have a new hall at Connor Park, and will that have perhaps a heat pump that can handle both hot and cool? And air filtration for smoke events, which sadly, we've had a lot of?
Thank you for the question, Chair. I don't have detailed information about that project. What I can offer is that as part of the corporate carbon neutrality plan and as part of the Community Climate Action Plan that's currently being revised to be brought back to a committee, conversations about resilience in public infrastructure and adaptation are front and center. So I think that question will be in front of a committee shortly. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Director Bax.
Yeah, I wanted to point out for Director Inkster that because a building is old doesn't mean that it can't become a cooling center, and that my community association has installed heat pumps in the, in our community hall, and it is now officially designated as a cooling center. And there are, within this document, there's a lot of pages, there is a list of cooling centers in each of our areas. And so unfortunately, your area, Madam Chair, doesn't have any. But there, you'll, if you read through the document, you'll find a bunch of different resources that are available. And again, thank you for this report.
Thank you. Alternate Director Wen.
Thank you, Chair. And I appreciate Director Inkster's comments on providing shade and things like that, but planting of deciduous trees may be contradicting efforts on FireSmart. And having just recently gone through the presentation from the fire department, you know, not everybody is going to be able to plant trees and provide shade within the distances that are recommended by the FireSmart program. So it's a careful balance there to find the right solution. And yeah, maybe heat pumps and tinted windows might be a better option than planting trees. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Director Gabius.
Thank you, Chair. And just, you know, reading this plan helps me understand the complexity of the, of staff's job, like, this is, and you know, when there's an emergency, emergencies don't happen one at a time. I think as we've seen in the past, like, they happen, you know, two, three on top of each other. So like, there's a lot of work there, but I think we have a role to play as a board, and we, through communicating with our communities, like, how do we build more resilient neighborhoods? How do we get people together to, you know, look after each other, like, know your neighbors, know who's vulnerable on your block, like, who, you know, like, I think there's a role that we have to play, because the work that staff has to do is, like, it's complex and it's intense. And so anything that we can do as a board to prepare our own communities when emergencies happen, I think, you know, and this discussion that we could have maybe, how do we increase resilience in our neighborhoods? But thank you, staff, and thank you, Ms. Miller, for the report. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to mention a little gripe of my own. All of the documents like this that we publish should have a version date on every page, because people do take pages out for reference, and we should know whether they're up to date or not. I mean, there's a lot of updating to be done on this plan. The three places that were used as cooling centers during the heat dome in Gibson's, none of the three are listed as cooling locations. That would be Sunnycrest Mall, the Gibson's Library, and our Recreation Center is not listed as a cooling center. So, you know, there's work to be done yet, and I'm looking forward to updates that are dated. Is there, I realize we do not have the capacity to do all the things that we need to do. But perhaps I could ask our consultant is whether there's any outreach with businesses. One thing that I have noticed in the last few years is that not one of the restaurants in Gibson's has air conditioning, which is rough on the patrons and it's terrifying for the people working in the kitchens. And it overloads, I remember one summer, the, one of the restaurants, all their coolers failed in the heat. So is there help out there, maybe through Emergency Management B.C. for businesses to upgrade their facilities?
Thank you for the question. I am not aware of any funding mechanisms currently offered by EMCR for businesses to upgrade. We did speak to businesses on the, within your communities. We were specifically targeting more places like pharmacies that interact regularly with identified vulnerable populations to see if they are able to share messages. I know in the community where I live, the pharmacy actually hands out water to patrons coming in and having to wait to pick up prescriptions or other medications during a heat dome. It's just something they do proactively.
Great, thank you. All right. Last chance, Director Bax.
I just wanted to add to that, that my son works in kitchens, and that there are, his first day at work at a new job in Gibson's was during a heat dome event, and the restaurant was closed, because there are laws in place that protect the workers within certain areas. If the, if the temperature is too high, it's actually illegal for people to work. And so these restaurants that are, if we're going to continue to have these events, and they want to continue to serve their patrons and have a business that's functioning, they're going to have to invest in their infrastructure. Now, if the government wants to give rebates or whatever for that, that's fine, great, we're not doing it. But it is, I think, something that a business has to be proactive about this, and if they have to look at their future in infrastructure, and if they want to continue to operate, they're going to have to do these kind of upgrades.
Thank you, Director Bax. I will point out that very few businesses own their facilities. They usually have a landlord, and our landlords are not necessarily all the best. But, okay, I think we have beaten this topic to death. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you to our presenter, thank you to staff. And we're going to move on to the next exciting report, which is the Water Supply Update, always a top hit for the SCRD. And that would be over to GM Rosenbaum.
Good morning. This is a water supply update, and it's the first one of the year, and it's going to be an early one. I think I've never done one earlier than April. The reason to provide this update today is the snowpack as we currently have it, and I assume there are some questions in it, and I know that there are questions in the community and amongst, maybe also amongst board members, about what that would mean for our water supply this summer. So hence this update. I'm going to share my screen. And see if it all works. And there we go. That's our, okay. So this is the first water supply update of the year, and this is a great wintery picture of Chapman Lake earlier this week, before it started to get warm. It looks nice. So how is the snowpack actually doing at Chapman Lake? This is the graph. So usually, we go up once every month at the end of the month. So these are the data from the end of March. And what you can see here is that, can you, is there my mouse visible? Yeah. This is the, was snowpack two weeks ago. So you could see that it was record low at about 40-ish centimeters, where we have an average of, at over 100. So I asked staff to go back up again early this week. So we did a second mid-month measurement that was taken two days ago, and that's the next bar. And we had a significant amount of rain and cold weather here at sea level over the last two weeks. So, and that's reflective of an increase in snowpack, as you can see, to 78 centimeters, so almost double of what it was before, which is good, but still significantly below normal. The weather at the moment is warm and sunny, which might result in that buildup that we had over the last two weeks to melt away very quickly again in upcoming days, especially with the weather forecast for the weekend with 14 degrees, which means that it will actually, we will have melting at higher elevations as well. But more on that later. This is the Edwards Lake. You can see that we were really low there, 70 centimeters only, so that's very marginal what was there two weeks ago, and it's a little bit better, but still about half of what it used to be, or at normal. Snowpack, the significance of snowpack in Chapman and Edwards is way different. Edwards, as long as the lake is full, it's full, and we're not that much, and we're not using it until later in the year. So the snowpack at Edwards doesn't really have a direct implication on our water supply situation where it does in Chapman. So this was the outlet of the lake, Chapman Lake, two weeks ago, and now, I can clarify a little bit, you can see it's greeny, a little dot here, you can see them both, that's the, our instrumentation at the dam. So in the left picture, this is the outlet, and in the right picture, the outlet is about here. And you can definitely see the difference in terms of snowpack between the left and the right, in terms of thickness of the snowpack, which is reflective in our, in the snow survey data itself. What is actually the relationship between snowpack and water supply? There are some drivers, snowpack is one of them, temperatures at sea level, which is highly related to actual use by the community. Temperatures, of course, at a higher elevation, primarily the freezing levels, and, but the primary, primary driver is still the timing, the amount, and the frequency of rain events, rain events, rain events. That's what ultimately that's driving how the water supply will be over the summer. And I think it's a good way to show that is this graph, where the gray bars on top show the amount of the snowpack on April 1st, which is the biggest snowpack you can have. Usually, that's the peak of the snowpack, and the bars underneath it, yellow is the amount of time we were in stage two, light blue in stage one, orange, stage three, and red, stage four. And the more you look at this graph, the more it shows that there is no single relationship between snowpack and the chance of going to stage four, of the time of going to stage four. The primary, there is some relationship between snowpack and when stage two is being called. However, there's also a lot of variation there. Let's say 2022, we had just a normal snowpack, we called stage two extremely late, late July only, and as we all know, we had the most severe drought in the fall as the SCRD ever had. While if you compare it to last year, comparable snowpack, completely different scenario. Or if you compare it to 2019, we had just a little bit below average snowpack, still early calling of stage two, and never even, there was totally no need to go to stage four. So there is, its precipitation is the primary driver here over the summer and not the snowpack as it is on April 1st. So what is the outlook for the upcoming month? Above-average temperatures for the upcoming three months? Dry, most likely dry March and April. No clear precipitation trends get confirmed for May, and I expect that we will, that we will have an increased snowmelt this year, based on these conditions, which could result in earlier calling of stage two. However, there's completely no certainty about the outlook for July and September, because El Nino is going to fade, and there's really uncertainty about what's going to happen afterwards. So as the Environmental Canada's Waring Preparedness Meteorologist said last week, it was, let's be ready for everything. meteorologist said at last week, it was, let's be ready for everything and anything. Can be a drier summer, it can be extreme wet summer. It's all up in the air yet. So in terms of our sourcing, all the regular sources are, of course, are available to us. Edwards Lake, Chapman Lake, Great Creek and Chester Well. Church Road is fully commissioned. And if that's producing at max capacity, it could delay us going to stage four for, with about 21 days. Last year, it contributed about 11 days in delaying the need to call stage four. This year, with the full volume, it could be up to 21 days. And we have the emergency systems at Chapman and Edwards approved until late summer for them to be in place and used. In terms of communications with the community, last year we have, we launched a new website, sad.ca/waterupdates. Please go there for the latest and the greatest because it's up to date and will continue to be updated frequently. We're continuing to do a lot of advertisement in the coastal border and online. There's leak notifications letters being sent out as we speak, early on in the season. There is a big mail out coming to all residents next month in April on water conservation with the regulations and reminders of what people can do to prepare for the summer. And we're going to notify all known high users again to, to inform them that they're a high user, encourage them to reduce their consumption of water. But what can people do right now in March and April? Because we still have the water and the water in the Chapman Creek is still very good in flow. So complete all your water intensive activities now. Wash your decks, your siding, your fences, do it now. Clean your corridors, drive your, your driveways and cars. Maintain and install your rainwater harvesting systems now while you still have some chance to fill them up with a little bit of rain before you actually need the water. Install your drip irrigation system and primarily, primarily test for and fix all your leaks. There's more information on how to do so on, on our website, but really leaks are still the most important thing we can, or a conservation measure we can take. And as always, sign up for the monthly water use update. We currently are over 900 subscribers. So we hope to exceed 1,000 shortly. So that's, that's one thing that residents can do as well. And as indicated, sad.ca/waterupdate is where all the information can be found. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. And first up is Director Ingster.
I have a few questions, so I'll ask a couple and then we can go to others if there's others. Thanks. Thank you, Chair. When I look at the statistics, Mr. Rosenboom, that you provided, and in the last sets of snowpack information, I didn't notice it, maybe it was there, you showed statistics over a number of years of snowpack measurements. I noticed some interesting years. I noticed 1996 was a low snowpack year, really low, lower than now. And now I have to, I have to wonder what those years looked like locally. There wasn't a water, there wasn't a water issue then as far as I can recall because you would, you'd remember things like that. It would have been one of the first. And I don't remember the fire situation then. So obviously there might have been a warm year. So that, that's a query for me just generally, but, and, and obviously you can't answer that. But I look and see a number of other years without measurements done, snow measurements done by the regional district. And I, I would say through, through the chair to you, I would ask why they weren't done. And it's not, it's not a question of, it's not an accusatory question. It's actually a, I'm thinking back to, to suggesting that, once again, the water concerns weren't what they are now. It was, people just didn't know that we would be hitting this. So they weren't doing though, all those measurements. But I'm not sure if you know that organizationally, but I would, I would suggest that they just didn't know to measure all those things because we weren't hitting these water issues that we are now. That's just one big question. I'll leave it at that to come back later. Thanks, Chair.
Over to staff.
Thanks, Con. Thanks for the question. Could be that in, that was, there are occasions where, let's say there was a March snow measure, snow survey done, but not in April. It could be, for example, that we couldn't, big reason is, we might not have been able to go up there because of the weather. If there's a long extended period of cloudiness, we're just not able to fly up there to, to take a measurement. So that could be one of the reasons. But as you indicated, there might be other reasons as well. But we try to go up there as soon as we can and as we're supposed to, as per our schedule to do so. In terms of 98, 98, six, you mentioned that might be one of the earliest one. It might be interesting to, we were doing some cleanup of our documents and I found an order issued by the work superintendent in 1978 to indicate to the community that the current water restrictions were extended to ban all water use for lawns between seven and nine in the evenings. So already in 78, there were water restrictions. Already in 78, there were, was a need to take an order extraordinarily measured to make sure that there was enough water to the community. And I thought it was a need fact to share with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Bax.
Yeah, thank you for this report. And yeah, it's nice to see that our snowpack has, has improved. It's no longer below 50% as it was before. Now it's kind of just around 80% of what it normally is. But on a different subject, I just want to know, we have five test wells that are going in. And I was wondering when we're going to see results from these test wells? Is that going to be September, October-ish? And I just want the public to know that we are working on other sources.
Thank you. Over to staff.
We're still awaiting approval. We're awaiting approval from the required approvals to start drilling those wells. So no timeline yet.
Thank you. Director Toth.
Thank you, Chair. One thing that I keep reminding people every time we talk about snowpack is that, you know, snowpack doesn't equal rain. We keep hearing it here that, you know, the Chapman system is heavily rain influenced. And so really the snowpack only impacts how soon we start moving through the restrictions. It doesn't really help us once we start moving through restrictions. The, the question that I've got though for now is with the 900 folks that have signed up for their water consumption updates, are the residents in the district a seashield able to sign up for those once they've got their meters installed as we work through the metering program? Thanks.
Great question.
Thank you for the question. Unfortunately, the answer is no. We need to upload all the information associated with the, the meters actually that are installed, as well as the, all the billing accounts associated, et cetera. That, there's a lot of backend work that still need, that still is required. So, and that will be what we call bulk upload once all meters are in place. So that will be 2025 before that will be the case. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have a question, which is, one of the projects we have underway is retrofits to our water treatment plant so that it can handle low volumes of water, which is not something it was ever designed for. And so that we can pull more water from other sources and not have a repercussion on the Chapman plant. How is that going?
Thank you. Following the board approval of the budget, staff associate a budget for the required pumps. Staff are currently working with the vendors to, to procure those pumps as soon as we can. And we hope to have them installed by the, to the summer.
Wonderful. Director Ingster.
The earlier questions I asked sort of triggered a little bit of history going back. And I, I can say I remember when the large water plant in reference to Director Rosenboom's comment about the restrictions earlier, I remember when the large water plant, treatment plant came on in the early 2000s. And a number of elected officials went up there and looked and it was, it looked basically like a really kind of, because it had windows all around it, a really cool, deep Olympic swimming pool. And at that point, with all the money spent and because it was half local, half outside money, like grants that we get, it looked like, looked like a lot of water at the time. And it looked like a big expenditure. And it looked like at that point that the amount of treated water that they had would be enough water for a number of years. But that was early 2000s. And once again, it's all about planning ahead and continuing to add infrastructure because as I said, that was a big thing for the regional district to apply for and get the money and build that plant at the time up, up Selma Park Road and down Reservoir Road if anybody's ever been there on the board now. I just wanted to ask though, through you to Director Rosenboom, because he's probably becoming one of the gurus in all things water, I'm assuming that there's a, a lot of areas and in a sense of province, province-wide concern over snowpack. So once again, it's not just the Sunshine Coast that's wondering how we'll have enough snowpack melt in late spring. Thanks.
Over to staff.
Thank you. Even though there was not a specific question, I can provide some clarity on that. No, there's widespread concern all over the province in terms of snowpack. We also already know that there are some local governments that are gearing up their USC's because of wildfire risk. For some, that's more, that's primarily their risk associated with low snowpacks, is that there is increased risk of early wildfires, but also water supply. And I think our understanding of our water system and the way we can manage it throughout the summer and the awareness amongst the community about how our water system works and the importance of conservation and fixing these, et cetera, is, I think our understanding of, and when I say our, is me as a resident of the Sunshine Coast and together with all the residents of the Sunshine Coast, I think our general understanding of the water supply situation and what we can do ourselves and how it works is way more than many local other, local governments in areas in the, in the province that might have water supply situations and drought situations this summer.
Thank you. Director Lee.
Thank you, Chair. I was interested in what would be happening with South Pender. I know we have a project on the books to access more water from Harris Lake. Is, is that going to make a difference when we go to stage three? I, I understand that if we could access the water in its entirety in that lake, that it would either delay or possibly eliminate stage three for South Pender. So I was wondering, do we know yet? And do we have plans to find out?
Thank you. Thank you for the question. As part of the budget process, the board approved the project to confirm our best approach to address the South Pender issue. One of them could be getting more water out of Harris Lake. Others are potentially amending a water license to allow for more water to be diverted on a daily basis because that's one of the concerns as well. And the project has not been started yet. And it won't make a difference this year. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for reminding us that there are other water systems than Chapman, which gets all the attention. Anything further from the directors? I'm not seeing anything further. So in that case, we thank, thank you, GM Rosenboom, for our first water supply update and the earliest ever. And we're going to move on to the partnership agreement with BC Healthy Communities Wellbeing Initiative. And I believe that's over to GM Hall.
Thank you, Chair. So there's, there's a lot of mechanical detail in this report about what's actually a fairly simple scenario, which I'll attempt to summarize. Vancouver Coastal Health identified a synergy with one of their initiatives and our OCP renewal project. So they're, they're working with an agency called BC Healthy Communities. They have a project lined up. They've already got support from, or involvement confirmed from School District 46. And they, they played matchmaker. And they've offered that if we want to take part, all we would have to do is enter into an agreement to be a partner to the project. They've asked if we're interested in this and if, if so, would we be willing to, to enter this agreement? Our contribution would be some staff time. We estimate it at no more than 50 hours. But it's worth saying that we, we already have time allocated to community engagement for our OCP project. So it's not really 50 incremental hours associated with this project. But staff assess that this is a, an opportunity that fits really well with the direction the project is taking. And it has no real sort of material implications for the resourcing that we already have lined up for this. And it would add quality to, to the engagement process. So staff recommend, as, as noted on page 211, entering into a partnership agreement that would enable us to take part in this. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Gabius.
Well, thank you, Chair. Well, first, I would like to move the recommendations on page 211. Thank you very much. Okay.
And I see a second, dear.
Perfect. And then I have a question. In the OCP renewal process, like typically when OCPs are developed, what, what's the youth engagement typically at the SCRD?
Thank you through the chair. Thank you for the question. I'm not sure that there is a typical for SCRD noting that our oldest, our oldest OCP just turned 29. But I will say that in planning best practices, youth engagement has certainly been ascendant and that we will be looking for opportunities to hear from, from all members of our community, regardless of age, as part of our process. Thanks.
Yeah, just a quick follow-up. Have there, in, youth voice is so important in this work, in the OCP work. And is there, would there be an opportunity or has it been done before or have other districts done it where there are youth representatives working on the actual document, like as part of the community groups?
Thank you for the question. There are certainly precedents for that in other local governments. There's also, I, I think even more commonly are partnering with youth organizations, be it schools or other, as they have the, the sometimes specialized skills and connections to, to engage youth in, in projects as, as we're seeing with this proposed project.
Great. It sounds like maybe an outreach to School District 46 might be in order. Director Bax.
Thank you. I, I thought Director Gabius would get to my question. She answered, she asked one of the questions that I, I wanted to know. I was wondering, now you say that you're going to be engaging youth at a staff level. And I was wondering if there's anything at the board level that, that we could involve ourselves in? Will there be youth delegations or will there be sessions that the board can attend or whatever that looks like? I know that some of us have an interest in, in our youth. I know that some of us have an interest in, in our youth and, and wouldn't mind putting some of our time towards a project like this.
I'm just, I will go to staff, but I'm also going to suggest that might be a good discussion for the board to have, perhaps over lunch, at least to fill in some of the history too, because we did have some youth outreach going on before COVID. And then we had COVID. The last group I remember here was the Ecole Pacific. The kids here came to the board table and held a meeting, which was a lot of fun. Over to staff though. GM Hall, anything further?
Thank you, Chair. Just to say that after, I believe it was at the last board meeting, contract approval for our consultant partner for this project was approved. Staff are looking forward to initiating the project phase that involves our, our consultant partner and bringing forward information on, on next steps. And so committee can expect to see more detail, including the outreach plan soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alternate Director, Winn.
Thank you, Chair. And great, great agreement partnering like this. I do have one question. It's in the financial implications and GM Hall spoke to it a little bit, but I'd like a little bit of clarity on it is it's the staff in-kind contribution. And it's not clear. It just says small amounts of time. I'd just like a little clarity on what is small amounts of time? Tens, hundreds of hours, tens of hours, you know, what, what is small?
GM Hall.
Thank you for the question, Chair. Staff estimated at less than 50. The project will be taking place in the remainder of this school year. And so it's not, although we'd love to explore opportunities to do more and continue, this particular agreement is only for a few months. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further hands, I'm going to call the question on the recommendations of page 211. All those in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes. Thank you very much. Next item up is LGDAP, I'm not sure how to pronounce that. Application to the Local Government Development Approval Program. And I believe we're back over to GM Hall, are we?
Thank you, Chair. This, so the province has come back with the next phase, I guess, of the, what was DAPR. So they've, they've got this new funding stream that enables local governments to apply for funding to implement the recommendations that were identified through DAPR. And the board has, the board has approved resources to take a number of steps on the recommendations that came from our review last year. So staff are doing that. If we apply for more money, it offers, it offers the opportunity to kind of accelerate things and, and work deeper into that list of recommendations. So staff, in this report, staff are recommending that we apply. And they've, we've identified a couple of specific things that fit with the, fit with the funding program and with the recommendations that we received last year. The deadline was last week to make an application. This was one of these short window things. So staff made the application to, to UBCM, making it clear that we would be speaking with our committee and then board. And that any decision on, on finalizing the application was dependent on a, a board decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Director Backs.
Yeah, my question has to do with how much staff time does it take to create this grant application? And it's really kind of something that I've, I'm, I'm kind of a little upset about the fact that the provincial government keeps putting legislation on us and then asking our staff to justify the work that we're going to do by creating grants and that we have to put staff time towards grants and then our, our staff becomes grant writers. And so I wonder why the provincial government just doesn't say, this is the money that you need to do the job, do the job. So how much time does it take for our staff to create a grant application like this? This is a good example of it.
All right. The other question about should the province be doing this? We can direct to our MLA, but the specific question about time, over to GM Hall.
Thank you, Chair. Staff don't, in this case, speaking to this one grant, staff didn't track the exact amount of time. I would estimate it at about 10 hours. Thanks.
Nonetheless, we do spend quite a lot of time writing grant applications one way or another, and some are much more complex than others. I'm hoping that somebody would like to make a motion. Ah, Director Backs.
I'd like to move the recommendations as they appear on page 214.
And I see a secondary. Seeing no further hands, I'm calling the question. All those in favor? Thank you. That appears to be almost every, anyone opposed? No? Good. I'm glad to hear that. All right. We are now at the end of the open agenda. We will be going in camera. And so I'm looking for a motion that the public be excluded from attendance at the meeting in accordance with section 91A, I, and K of the community charter. Moved, seconded. All those in favor? Thank you very much. I'm going to suggest that we take a break for 10 minutes. And I'm just going to quickly check for questions in the virtual gallery. Oh, look. Okay. Connie, you're on.
Thank you, Chair McMahon. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yes, just attending virtually and wanting to confirm that there is no representative from the town of Gibson's in attendance. I don't see one on the screen.
No, there is no one here from the town this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll be back at 10:55.
Welcome back to the committee of the whole meeting of Thursday, March the fourteenth, twenty twenty four. We're wrapping up. Do I see a motion to adjourn? Moved, seconded, all in favor. Goodbye folks. Thanks for attending.